Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Galt?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kayler?
Present. Do I have a volunteer for the invocation, please?
I'll do it.
Thank you. Do I have a volunteer for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'll do it.
Thank you.
My Father, we're talking to heaven. We thank you for today. We thank you for each other. We thank you for relationships, more than anything, Father. We thank you for your character. We should try to reflect whenever we interact with each other. Forgiveness, compassion, kindness, these are things that are very cost-effective because it doesn't cost us anything. Maybe a little pride, which is not a bad thing to give up. In your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank all the volunteers tonight. That worked well. We might try that again. Okay. City manager, any additions or deletions?
Yes, I'd like to add an ordinance, introduction, amended agreement with Republic Services Incorporated.
Okay.
It will become F.
All right. I'd like to introduce Michael Zader. Is that correct, Michael?
Yeah.
And he's our new crime analyst for the Paducah Police Department. Chief Barnhill, you want to bring him up?
Yes.
And thank you for being here tonight.
This is Michael Zadar.
Zadar.
Real briefly, we've had some adjustments within the police department. One of the adjustments that we're making here in the process of making with Michael coming on board with us is transitioning an old investigative assistant position into more of a crime analyst position. With all the coined terms that are out there these days, data-driven policing and those type things, Michael's coming on with us. He has a statistical background. He graduated Xavier University with his bachelor's degree and most recently with the University of Cincinnati with his master's degree, both of those being under criminal justice majors, with a strong emphasis in data analysis and crime analysis. So we are excited to have Michael on with us. He has been with us, what, three days now? And we're already seeing little glimpses of what we have to come. And we know that the information that he's going to compile and produce for us is going to better push our resources out to crime-ridden areas or hopefully prevent some of those crimes also. So we're very excited about it. We just wanted to take a minute to introduce him because you all didn't get to meet him the other night.
Now, is this a new position, chief? Or...
It's not increasing positions. I'm just transferring one position role into a different role.
Right. I thought that's what... Didn't we talk about that last week?
We did. Yeah.
So, Michael, do you live here in Paducah?
Yeah, I just moved here from Cincinnati.
Well, great.
Welcome.
Yeah.
I'm really excited to be here.
Like a millennium or an exer. I mean, it's good to have another one.
Yeah. We're excited to have him on board. And like I said, I think with giving a little bit of time or some resources, I think you'll see the fruits of his labors come to help our officers out on the street.
Well, welcome, and thank you for working for the city. And I know you'll do a great job.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So we'll go on to our municipal orders. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order approving the execution of a online grant application to obtain a 2015-2016 Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Accountability Grant through the U.S. Department of Justice in the amount of $10,912 to be used by the Paducah Police Department be adopted.
Second. Chief, do you want to talk about this?
Every year that you all are presented with this grant, you understand that we get a formula and it produces a number to us. That formula has produced $10,912 in the way of federal funds to the police department that's allocated so if we choose to apply, in which in this case we do. We are moving that direction with the body camera program. We have yet to single in on one particular vendor, but we know it's just a matter of time when we get our testing and evaluation done that we'll be selecting. We've based the 19 body cameras on some figures that we've been given by two different vendors. So we're going to be in that range where they get, you know, 17, 18, 19 cameras out of the $10,912 that's awarded to us or hopefully awarded to us.
I'm sure we'll be successful.
Yeah, we sure hope so. It's a good step. It will not complete the project, obviously, but it is a step in the right direction and we're pooling different monies together, such as the grant here and some others to make this project happen.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a deed of conveyance in all documents necessary for acquisition of a portion of real property located at 3325 Olivet Church Road to be used as a right-of-way and permanent drainage for the Olivet Church Road Improvement Project for and in consideration of $1,000 to be adopted.
Second.
Mayor, Commissioner, this is just a small piece of land that we need over on the existing Olivet Church Road. I've got about four more of these small ones to bring before you, and then we'll be totally complete with all the right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Ordinance is adoption. We've already talked about these, so we'll go through these quickly. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a service agreement with Motorola for fiscal year 2015-2016. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a service agreement with Motorola for yearly maintenance of the 800 megahertz radio controllers, individual department radios, Paducah-McCracken County 911 dispatch consoles, telephones, and other related radio equipment in the amount of $51,994.56. This contract shall expire June 30, 2016.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government. This ordinance is summarized as follows, adopting the City of Paducah annual budget for fiscal year July 1, 2015 through June 30, 2016 by estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of city government at $77,892,925, and summarized by fund as follows. General: $32,469,730. MAP: $1,600,200. Investment: $5,061,000. CDBG: $875,000. E911: $1,692,320. Court awards: $51,750. Debt: $3,016,935. CIP: $16,558,680. Bond fund: $1,271,000. Solid waste: $5,474,950. Civic center: $160,010. Rental: $134,920. Radio: $128,740. Fleet: $544,080. Fleet trust: $2,486,250. Self-insurance: $1,167,150. Health: $3,762,660. AEPF, PFPF, TRSTS: $1,437,550, for a total of $77,892,925.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Okay. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of OREsafety for sale to the city of breathing apparatus for use by the police, I mean, Paducah Fire Department for the remaining portion of 2015 and fiscal year 2016 with a one-year contract option to review and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah accepts the bid of OREsafety at the unit price of $7,000 per set for self-contained breathing apparatus for use by the fire department and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second. Hi, chief.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Just ask that you vote no on this. We're going to have a reintroduction of another ordinance later for a different vendor. Even though they checked yes to all the specs, they actually submitted the bid for the wrong equipment. So we discovered that after we had the first reading, and we're asking you to vote no for this adoption. Please.
Do you want it unanimous?
Sure.
Okay.
We don't anticipate this happening too often, but...
No, we don't.
So you want us to help you out here?
Please.
Okay. City clerk?
Should we make it like three to two?
Sure.
Commissioner Abraham?
No.
Commissioner Galt?
No.
Commissioner Rhodes?
No.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Mayor Kayler?
No. All right. Commissioner Rhodes, please. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance extending the boundary of the City of Paducah, Kentucky by finalizing the annexation of certain property lying adjacent to the corporate limits of the City of Paducah and defining accurately the boundary of said property to be included within the said corporate limits. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah hereby approves the final annexation of certain tracts of property contiguous to the present city limits located at 81 and 91 Plantation Drive and 2855 Lone Oak Road containing 5.939 acres more or less.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed zone change for property located at 81 and 91 Plantation Drive and 2855 Lone Oak Road and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance as to effect such rezoning. This ordinance is summarized as follows, rezoned properties located at 81 and 91 Plantation Drive and 2855 Lone Oak Road from R1 to Highway Business District, HBD, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance to effect such rezoning.
Second. City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky approving a short-form agreement for professional engineering services required to develop and manage a request for proposals to obtain a new contract for a solid waste transfer station and related solid waste services and authorizing the mayor to execute said contract. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City hereby approves the short-form agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc. for professional engineering services in the amount of $51,327 required to develop and manage a request for proposals to obtain a new contract for a solid waste transfer station and related solid waste services. Further, the mayor of the city is hereby authorized to execute the agreement.
Second. City manager, do you want to...
Is that not to exceed, Rick? I think it's not to exceed, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just a couple comments. This is a very, very important contract that this consulting agreement will assist us with. It's very, very high stakes where solid waste management is concerned, particularly with respect to the final disposal of solid waste in a permitted and approved landfill. It's pretty time-sensitive because we are very near the expiration of our current contract. In fact, we're going to be introducing an amendment tonight to extend that for six months for the purposes of this procurement. It's also a large issue in the sense of the monetary side of what will be the next contract for solid waste that we would anticipate would be set up similar to the way the past one has been with an initial period of 10 years and more than likely one or two five-year renewals. So on a 20-year anticipated period, at the current rate that we pay Republic of about $1,500,000 a year, it's about a $30 million contract that this consulting work will assist us in procuring. So it's a very large contract, very, very significant.
I want to make a comment. I raised a lot of issue about this. Seems like it's longer than a week, but a week ago. And as I thought about it this past week, just doing some quick math in my head, I was relating the $30 million that Jeff spoke of to the $50,000 and using a round number. It's about 2/10ths of 1 percent. It's a pretty small amount of money, I guess, in proportion to the $30 million that it protects, I guess you could say. So I had no problem with it.
On the other side of the aisle, I too had some issues about that. And my question was why we couldn't do this in-house. And then after meeting with the city manager and understanding the scope of what it was and the ramifications, if we don't get this right, I'm too satisfied with the money that we're spending to make sure that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you all.
City clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please, for introductions.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the McCracken County, Kentucky for a 2015... That's all right.
What are we supposed to read? Accept bid to purchase the self-contained?
Oh, wait a minute.
The one we voted no on, this is the... Under introduction.
Self-contained breathing apparatus?
I don't have this one.
Yeah. I read that already. This is the one we voted no on, right?
Well, you're going to read both of them. You had the first one and the second one.
This one that we do like. This one made my...
Bluegrass uniforms?
Yes.
Ah, gotcha.
Sorry.
It's all right. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of bluegrass uniforms for sale to the City of Paducah for breathing apparatus for use by the Paducah Fire Department for the remaining portion of 2015 and fiscal year 2016 with a one-year contract option to review and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah accepts the bid of bluegrass uniforms at the unit price of $7,150 per set for self-containing breathing apparatus for use by the fire department and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second. Chief?
Thank you. This is the correct vendor that submitted the actual specs that did meet the qualifications that we put out.
Gotcha.
So it's just a switch, and the vendor realized, the other vendor realized his error after we'd had the first reading, and so he couldn't sell the right-of-air practice to us. Now, this bluegrass uniform says the correct one. That's the one you'll be voting on until next meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next one on introduction. Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting grant funds through the Kentucky Heritage Council State Historic Preservation Office and National Park Service to be used to employ an intern to create a GIS database, inventory of commercial historic property and archaeological resources in the City of Paducah, and authorizing the mayor to execute said grant agreement and all documents relating to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the City of Paducah hereby accepts grant funds in the amount of $3,795 from the Kentucky Heritage Council State Historic Preservation Office and National Park Service for a certified local government program grant to be used to employ an intern to create a GIS database, inventory of commercial historic property, and archaeological resources in the City of Paducah. The city's match will be provided through in-kind services in the amount of $2,530.
Second.
Hi, Cheryl.
Hello. Melinda is super excited about this particular project and this grant. Currently, most of her inventory information for historic properties and cultural resources is spread across multiple databases and spreadsheets, and this will allow her, the intern, to centralize, you know, centralize that information, put it in one location. The purpose of that is to provide local developers and outside developers with economic information about the resources we have available downtown and hopefully spur some growth, additional growth downtown. Some of the information we're looking to collect will be general condition of the site, take pictures of each structure, give the historic name, address, square footage, things of that nature, and put it in one geodatabase that we publish on our map server and available to the public. So... Though we're looking for an intern from Murray State, most likely, probably in the fall or spring semesters.
Right. I liked what you said about Melinda being super excited. She's always super excited.
She is. She has a lot of energy.
Super excited about something she was working on.
Well, I'm hoping she is afforded a good intern with a lot of research skills because it's going to be required for this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Chapter 78 personnel of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows, the City of Paducah amends Section 78-63 automatic salary increases of Chapter 78 personnel of the Code of Ordinances to increase the automatic salary increase as of July 1, 2015 from $5 to $6 per month for each complete year of continuous services up to and including a total of 20 years for all appointed employees and members of the AFSCME bargaining unit. Further, the ordinance authorizes the automatic salary increase to change from $6 to $7 per month beginning July 1, 2017.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm super excited about this. In 1977, the commission started adding a dollar and a half pay to employees per year, per month of service. That was increased to $5 in the mid-'90s. I don't know if any of you were on the board at that time. And then with the negotiation with the AFSCME contract this last month, they negotiated the increase to six and then seven after two years. We also have that in ordinance form, but it would also, this ordinance would also apply to, would not apply to police, would not apply to fire bargaining unit members, but would apply to all other non-bargaining unit members, and there's about 45 to 50 of them that aren't in a bargaining unit. And so what does a dollar increase mean? Well, to put a little math to that, for an employee that's been here 10 years, that would mean 5 cents an hour or about $100 a year. So it's not a tremendous significant difference like when it went from a dollar and a half to $5, but it's a little something, and rewards those employees that have been here a long time.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve? Commissioner Wilson?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and approving the purchase of a certain tract of real estate generally located at 1408 1410 Broadway, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, from Sherry Dawn Roberts and husband Charles Ray Roberts for a public purpose. This ordinance is summarized as follows, this ordinance authorizes the City of Paducah, Kentucky to purchase a certain tract of real estate generally located at 1408 1410 Broadway, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky for a public purpose from Sherry Dawn Roberts and husband Charles Ray Roberts for a purchase price of $175,000.
Second. Hi, chief.
Good evening again, Mayor, Commission. As outlined here in front of you, 3,705 square feet addition to the Paducah Police Department office space. We have a couple of areas, several areas in need, but currently the digital forensics unit, which is the computer analyst and stuff that we have, are working out of a closet. We've had a need for extended space or extra space for quite some time. This opportunity has presented itself, most recently in discussions with the realtor that has the property, and I think we're getting a pretty good price for what we're getting here.
So it's that building?
It is next door to us. Essentially, it's a shell. It has a divider wall down the center, but it doesn't inhibit us from doing whatever we want to do once we get inside.
In the packet, there was a handwritten note about the funds not being available at this time?
Correct. There were, it was not, the funds weren't allocated specific for this project.
Okay.
But what we've done in current fiscal year budget, we've been able to save some money in different, several different areas and pull those monies into, once the fiscal year end closes.
You're putting them in a project? Okay.
To pay for this particular building.
I didn't understand it.
Yes.
Okay, I get it now.
So it isn't new money, so to speak?
Correct.
Money you saved.
Money that we have saved over the current fiscal year. Yes, ma'am.
It's money that was appropriated in this year's budget.
Right. I like the new signs out front. They really look sharp.
Thank you.
How long have those been up?
Talking about on the front of the building, on both sides. Quite some time.
Yeah, see, I just noticed them. I said, well, how long have they been up there? Two years?
Well, the progress, I think, of what you're noticing, maybe to improve the appearance of the facility, has been ongoing for quite some time. Been working with Rick's staff in small increments, whether it be painting or those particular windows or signage up on the building, and looking a lot better.
So that new black area that has, that's been up for a long time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just made a fool of myself.
Thank you all.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the McCracken County, Kentucky for a 2015-2016 Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Accountability Grant through the U.S. Department of Justice. This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an interlocal agreement between the City of Paducah and the County of McCracken, Kentucky for a 2015-2016 Edward Bryan Memorial Justice Accountability Grant through the U.S. Department of Justice. The interlocal agreement is required to remain in partnership with our local jurisdiction, even though the City of Paducah is the sole and authorized individual allocation. The term of this agreement shall be of the JAG Award, one-year period beginning July 1, 2015 and ending June 30, 2016 unless terminated by either party.
Second.
Mayor, this ordinance is simply, all it does is recognize the MOU between the city and the county for this joint, this application. That has to be recognized in this federal funding, and we have to do that, we have to renew that every year.
Is the fact the signs have been up for two years and I've never noticed it the reason that you can't take eyewitness reports anymore?
No, ma'am. Nothing to do with it.
City managers, report.
Well, I would be remiss if I didn't.
We need to do the contract extension with Republic.
We have F.
We have F.
Oh, yes.
Addition.
Oh, the addition. I didn't pencil that in, sorry. Okay, who has that?
I do.
Commissioner?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, moving in an extension and amendment to waste service agreement among the city of Paducah, Kentucky, and Republic Services of Kentucky LLC, formerly Commercial Waste Disposal, Inc., for the disposal of municipal solid waste and authorizing the execution of same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The ordinance authorizes the city of Paducah, Kentucky, to approve an extension and amendment agreement by and between the city of Paducah, Kentucky, and Republic Services of Kentucky LLC. Pursuant to the agreement, the city and Republic agreed to modify and extend the term for the provision of services by Republic for the disposal of municipal solid waste generated within the city until December 31, 2015, the terms and conditions of which are evidenced by a contract dated November 15, 1994, which contract was renewed and amended for the first five-year renewal by an agreement of parties dated April 5, 2005, and renewed and amended for the second five-year renewal term by an agreement dated October 13, 2010. This ordinance approves the form of the agreement presented to the Board of Commissioners of the city with such changes therein as shall not be adverse to the city and may be approved by the mayor.
Second.
I'll make a brief comment. If you would turn to Exhibit A on Page 2, there is a slight modification to this at the request of Republic under B. And it actually shows a small C. I'm not sure if that's correct or not, but let me first point out that the agreement does define what is acceptable waste to be put into the waste stream. It does not define unacceptable. It's implied. However, Republic would like to add language in there that states that under no circumstances shall Republic take title to unacceptable waste, defined as essentially anything that's not covered in the definition of acceptable. Well, we're certainly not asking them to take title to it. So, I do not, in consultation with city attorney, consider that to be a cause for any concern for us. That's the extent of the modification, other than the extension of the date, as was already stated.
Okay. City managers' report.
I mentioned that, want to express gratitude to the Commission for your consideration and approval of the city budget. Again, it's a major undertaking at all levels in the organization, and we're proud of what was brought forward, and appreciate your consideration of it and adoption of it. I think we had a lot of good discussion, especially around a lot of project needs, as well as beginning discussions about some prioritization and some financing options for those down the road. Again, want to recognize the Finance Office, John Perkins and his staff, the department head team, and all the work that went into the preparation, the part of all the employees. Have an executive session request for economic development.
Any comments tonight?
I have a couple. The first one, the accident on 20th and Washington was tragic. I had a few folks come up and ask about that particular, I guess, that corner, that intersection right there, along with a couple of others. And I wanted to make mention of this to Rick afterwards, if we could get out there and look and see if signage would be appropriate. The 24th block of Tremble, there seems to be a lot of children out there, and traffic is, according to this resident, is passing by with speeding. So, I'm not that familiar with that area, but these folks live there, so I told them that I would bring that to the attention of our guys. Check that out. The other issue I wanted to bring up is regarding, a year or so ago, when we had issue with our wall-to-wall murals, and we pretty much left it up in the air as it regards Vera laws. We kicked it over to our attorney, and she offered an opinion, but said that she wasn't, that really wasn't their area of expertise. So, the language in the opinion was reflected that. Looking at what we've spent from the taxpayers' money on the upkeep of these murals, it goes anywhere from $15 to, I think, as high as $24,000. Now, my, what I would like to see this board do is find out exactly from an attorney that has their expertise in Vera law, if indeed that we, if the artist that rendered the original work, if he's not going to do the original upkeep of it, is it legal for him to designate someone else in his team? If it is, then that's fine. If it's not, then we need to make sure that we're being, we're doing what we need to do to make sure that we open that up. So, we haven't really dealt with that. We kind of left that up in the air. If you guys remember when the chamber we're here was pretty much full of our guys, and I say our guys, our local artists, and no one had a problem with original artists doing maintenance on their own work. No one had a problem with that. That's fine, that's understandable. The issue was, if you're not going to do maintenance and upkeep on your own work, that's where, that's where the issue arose, and we didn't really deal with that. We kind of left it up, just kind of, I don't know what we did, but it's still hanging. So, we need to get an opinion on someone that's well-versed, that that's what they do. The Vera laws that govern these artists that says, okay, you can do this, you can't do that, then we need to know exactly what's what. Because the money that we're spending on the upkeep of these murals, it's taxpayers' money. So, we're responsible for making sure that, again, that our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed when it comes to this. So, it's kind of out there, we never finished it. I think we need to, to find out, once and for all, what we can and what we can't do. I don't want to be held hostage on a situation where we just haven't taken the initiative to find out, and we just keep doing what we've always done. Comments? Anybody got any?
I'd have to, honestly, I'd have to look at those minutes to see what we, how we did, word that.
We didn't word anything.
Well, we talked about it.
That's right, and that's all we did. We didn't.
I thought it became a non-issue because Robert Dafford came himself to Paducah to do the work. I believe he's in town today. Did I not see him?
They're doing it now.
But that's not, that's not anything concrete. I mean, what I'm saying.
You want to spend, you want to spend the money to have an attorney give us a legal opinion?
Yes. We're spending the money, and we don't know if he's doing what he's doing legal or not. We're spending the money, and I think we should find out exactly. I mean.
Wouldn't it really, though boil down to what the Commission decides they want to do? I mean, we could let anyone do it if we wanted to, whether, I mean, I don't know that a legal opinion.
When you hear, when you hear terms like, I, this is my work, okay, granted, and I don't want Artist A working on my work, I want Artist B. Okay, that sounds fine, but can you legally do that? There's laws that govern those type things, and we don't know what it says.
Well, I guess, and City Manager.
When the murals started, what year? What year did those begin?
The first of the murals, 1996.
Okay.
And how, how were they paid for?
Private pay.
Private.
Private. That's no longer the case.
Yeah, there's still, each, no, the maintenance isn't, but each mural is privately paid for. And wall-to-wall, now, I think I'm saying this right, wall-to-wall paid for the maintenance at one time, correct?
I believe so.
And then, when we had the big blow-up with, we're going to tear all the flood wall down, we're going to put a demountable flood wall system, we're going to move all of the murals to a park, that's when all of the supporters of wall-to-wall said, we're through with it. We're not going to give any more money. If you people are going to talk crazy like that, we're out of here. So, then that's when the city had to start helping with the maintenance of the murals.
Okay, well, if it's, if it.
No, they're, I think they're trying to get back to that again, Richard. The Board is trying to get back to raising enough money to do the maintenance, but I don't think they're there quite yet.
Well, I know Roe Morse was here last time and testified before us about it, the ethical part of an artist doing work on another artist's work?
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's what a lot of it boils down to, is, is that ethical? It's your, it's that artist's work, and so, are you trying to get local artists to be able to do it?
See, this is, this is why we need to find out exactly what's what, because we're speculating.
But.
Is it ethical? Well, is it legal? Can I say, I want Commissioner Gault to do work on my, on my mural that I originally worked on, and the laws that govern these artists says, no, you can't do that. Works for hire. All of those things are in play, and it's just kind of floating up in the air, and we're allowing it to.
But if there was no taxpayers' dollars put toward it, then there wouldn't be an issue.
Except the taxpayer, accepts that the taxpayer owns the flood wall.
Because it would all be privately paid.
But, I mean, when you go to the taxpayer owns the flood wall, I'm trying to remove it from wall-to-wall because that's such a hot-button issue. And, I mean, when you talk about that, everybody just gets their back up. But I'm looking at it from the angle of Ingram, and the city paid for that mural there. But if Ingram were to hire someone to go in and paint that mural, touch it up, is it their obligation to hire the same, or can they hire anyone that they choose to? It would be private dollars, even though it was paid for with city dollars. Do you understand where I'm going? I mean.
The city paid for those.
Yeah, the city.
The city paid, I believe.
Paid the local.
As.
Paid the local artists to paint those as an incentive.
For them coming.
It was part of Ingram's deal, to the best of my recollection. And that's why I'm trying to remove it from.
Right.
Wall-to-wall, because that becomes such a, and that was, that was done by local artists. That was all, I mean, it just gets a little muddy.
And that's on the same flood wall.
It's on the same flood wall.
So, so again, my question, my, what I'm saying is this, we need to find out exactly what's what. I mean, we can speculate and we can talk about it, but legally, we don't know if what's going on, what's been allowed to happen is legal to do it or not. And I don't, I don't understand why it's, I mean, I would think that we would want to do that. And if it is, fine, that's the way it is, I don't have a problem with it.
I think we would have to hire a very specialized attorney in that.
Someone that's well-versed in the subject that we're talking about, because we're not, and our attorneys across the street aren't.
No, no. And we did get an opinion from Americans for the Arts the last time, from their attorney. So, I'm sure that, well, J. Dick would be very.
Dixon.
Knowledge, very knowledgeable of attorneys that would deal with those kind of things. I mean, Americans for the Arts could give us some opinions.
Well, either that or someone else that specializes in that area.
That's what I'm saying. That's what.
I think we don't, I mean, this year, it's not an issue because Robert Dafford himself is here working on what he would consider his sign. I mean, I'm just looking at some old texts, old emails from that.
But I think that's what you want to know. Are we obligated to Dafford, right? Isn't it?
Exactly.
After, yeah.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, here, he says he's the sole owner of Dafford Murals, and talks about it, but.
There's other, there's, we need to find out if, the question on the table is, what does, what does the law that govern those guys as it regards to their original work and other artists working on original work? Can they do that or not? And if they're can, if he can designate that out, or say whatever, if he can do it, then I'm fine with it. But if it's not, then we need to make some adjustments in our MOUs, I think.
Eliminate the inserts.
Exactly.
On the Ingram murals that were done, Carol, Ingram paid, the city paid $50,000 on that.
That's what I.
Ingram paid $100,000.
Hundred, right. That's what, it was a split, but there were taxpayer dollars that went into it, it's the same flood wall. And my question, I guess, I was just trying to remove it from that, is if someone had to be hired to touch them up, I mean, at some juncture, even though we didn't pay for them, what's the obligation? Can Ingram, I mean, I'm sure Ingram can just go out and hire whomever they choose because it's a private transaction.
Well, and some of the artists that did that particular work does not even live here anymore, so.
But, or would they be obliga, I mean, you know, it's kind of the same question, but do we even have a dog in that fight, even though taxpayer dollars went into it at the time? I mean, it just becomes a, I don't even know that we want to step off into some of that, but.
Well, I think that's somewhat of a different issue, too. They were commissioned to do that work. It was not the same as a Robert Dafford.
Copyrighted.
Wall-to-wall murals. Those are a national, or maybe even an international-type program that he develops.
There is about the four.
Well, there are also, there are also issues of work for hire. Where does that, where does that go? Where does that, as far as, is that covered under Vera? Can, I mean, I don't know, but those are, those are the type of things that we need to, we need to find out.
Are there other communities with Robert Dafford?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Maybe perhaps they have already researched that and would have that opinion, but my guess is if we go and have to get a DC or somebody, an attorney, we're going to be spending more than we spent on the painting of the flood walls this year. So, if some of those other communities have had a, an opinion, maybe they would share it with us.
A good first place to start. Wouldn't cost much, telephone call.
I want to, I want to know if what we're doing, do we have to do it this way, because no one knows? And there are people out there, yeah, okay, so you have to spend, we would have to spend some money to find out. I think it's worth that. And I may be in the minority, but I think it's worth that, to find out.
Yeah, the murals, I mean, we're, we're on the top list for that being a tourist attraction, the Dafford Murals.
Right. And we have world-famous artists living here, celebrated in every other magazine you pick up. We're an art community. We have a skill set, a high skill set. No one's talking about defacing or vandalizing anything. No one's talking about an artist putting their reputation on the line by, we're not doing that. I just want to find out if the rules that govern these guys says, you can do A, B, and C, but you can't do D, don't try it. And I want to know what that is.
We'll look into that. We'll get started on it next week.
What exactly does that mean?
That means we'll call the other cities, start there, see what they do, what they have done. If that doesn't satisfy, then we'll hire an attorney, a specialized attorney, and I'm sure Americans for the Arts can direct us into the, to that area.
Would we vote on that, whether or not we were going to hire an attorney?
I think we'd have to. We'd have to bring, bring an ordinance forward on that.
You know, I would hope that that might not be too difficult of a thing for a knowledgeable attorney to research, so, you know, we can scratch that and find out, and if it's, if it's a big sum of money, sure, we'd bring it back to you.
All right.
I would think somebody would know that. I mean.
Well, it would, yeah.
Surely, if it's never been an issue in another city, it's, would be very interesting. Why? Why has it never been an issue in another city that has Dafford Murals?
Well, it's like they say, if you have a town that has one attorney, he goes, he starves, and you have two, then they both make a fortune. So, I'm sure they probably find somebody would argue.
Well, and I don't, I don't know that we would go on what another community's local attorney suggested to them. I think if some local attorney or some town out there consulted a more recognized authority on that source, that'd be, that'd be another matter. But if it's the guy down the street that doesn't necessarily have expertise, and I don't know for any further along than we think we are now.
That's all I have.
Yes, who has the?
I have it. I move that the Board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. A specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second.
Second.
All right. Let's do it.
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kaylin?
Aye.
Adjourned.
Oh.
We will not be coming back, so we are adjourned.